Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to this public forum featuring candidates for one open seat on the school board of St. Cloud area District 742. Thank you, candidates, for attending and participating in this event. The League of Women Voters of the St. Cloud area would like to thank the staff of District 742 for making arrangements for us to meet in this room. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization. This means we do not support or oppose political parties or candidates, but we do study and take positions on issues. I'm Karen Langson, a member of the St. Cloud area league, and I will be your moderator tonight. Our timekeepers are Susan Smith and Angie Rivera. We moderate candidate forums according to a standard protocol. The candidates have accepted the format in advance. Please silence your personal devices such as cell phones. The League of Women Voters of St. Cloud area reserves the right to tape and photograph this event and publish the results. Questions will come from you, the audience, in written form on the cards provided. Question facilitators will review, sort, and forward audience questions to the moderator. Questions of a similar nature may be condensed and combined. Questions should relate to specific issues that candidates would normally address as public officials in this particular office. Questions on unrelated topics or of a personal nature will not be asked. All candidates will be given a chance to answer each question. Participants are asked to remain quiet while candidates are speaking so that everyone can hear their responses. All applause will be held until the forum is complete. The candidates are seated in alphabetical order by last name. I am pleased to introduce Gina Acevedo, Al Dogren, and Peter Hammerlink. These three candidates are running for one open seat on the St. Cloud school board and will appear on the special election ballot November 4th. The candidates' opening statements will be offered in alphabetical order. After that, the order for answering will be rotated randomly. Candidates, you will each be allowed the following amounts of time: one minute for opening statements, two minutes to answer each question, and one minute for a closing statement. The timekeeper will hold up a yellow card when you have 30 seconds left. The red card that says "time" means finish your sentence and stop. The St. Cloud school board has important responsibilities, including to set policies for District 742 and to manage the district's finances in a fiscally responsible manner. Candidates, you will have one minute to state why you are seeking the office of a school board member. We will begin with Gina.
Thank you. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum tonight, and thank you all for coming out. I'm Gina Acevedo. I've lived in St. Cloud for about 14 years with my husband, and I'm the proud mother of 10-year-old twin boys in our school district. Since I'm the new one on the ballot, I'll share a little bit about me. I grew up as a military kid and had the privilege of living and attending school in a variety of places, and this helped shape my view of community. Later went on to study sociology at the University of South Florida, which I gained a broader perspective on how we live, work, and interact with one another. I'm running for school board because I feel a deep purpose to serve my community. I understand how school board decisions can impact community members and families because I'm one of them. So I am running because I feel a great mission in the betterment of my community, and I thank you all for being here tonight.
Thank you. Al?
Yep, my name is Al Dogren, current member of the St. Cloud school board. I've been on the board for the past 13 years. Why am I running? I guess I'm running, number one, because I'm on the board, and there's lots of unfinished business that I would like to work through. I think I do a pretty good job. I think I have a lot of institutional knowledge, which is very valuable to the school board. And there's a few things that I would really like to see through in this coming term. One of them is just the improvements to Apollo. I've been through lots of remodeling projects, and we've got this one started. We're in the midst of it, and I'd really like to see it through to its conclusion. And I also would say that of all the members of the school board, I have a very unique perspective from the other members, or not. Everybody's got a unique perspective. I shouldn't say that. I come from a different perspective, and the more different perspectives and the more differing those perspectives are, I think, the better the decisions that a school board makes. You have to consider all sides of an issue, and every constituent should be represented out in the community. So that's really why I'm running. I enjoy it. I've been loyal to the board. I've probably missed a half a dozen meetings in 13 years, if, if. I don't even know if it's that many. Anyway, welcome, everybody. Glad to have you here.
Thank you. Peter?
I too want to thank the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this. I've been a resident of the St. Cloud or St. Joseph area since 1976. That puts me in fifth grade at the time. I spent a number of efforts on bond levy efforts within the district, was leadership role on those, leadership role at the Kennedy PTA, and also was a board member from 2011, 2014. I'm a strong believer in public education, obviously. I come from a family that was built in public education. My dad was an educator. But what kind of kicked me into running again was shortly after the tech graduation, there was a kerfuffle or an incident, and some people at work were like, oh, of course that was at tech. And that just turned the switch in me. I said, we are a better district than that impression people have, and I want to work to help get that impression out. That 742 is a destination district, that we do so many things that are wonderful here, and we need to keep building on that. And I think I'm kind of that pragmatic, deep-thinking leader that can do that.
Thank you. All right. Question one. We will start with Peter. What are two of your top priorities if you are elected to the board?
Certainly a great question. First priority is the special education cross subsidy. The state is mandated to fully fund special education, actually, a number of areas of education. And in 742, we do an outstanding job of special education, but there's so many things that that staff has to do that the state says they must do, but the state doesn't fund. And so that becomes, and we have to take money from our general funds to do that. And that's something that's been going on for a long time. It's been talked about. It's been talked about forever, but we need to take a little bit further action on it. We need to start to get one-on-one with legislators. We need to bring them to the schools. We need to go talk to them. We need to get members of the community understanding how this cross subsidy affects our funding and have them take the message to the legislators. The second issue, and that's always the ongoing one, is safety and security, whether you talk to people who are within the school, without staff, students. And I think we're doing an excellent job with that at this point, with some of the apps that have been deployed, some of the meetings we've had. The buildings are all now going to be buttoned down once this remodel of Apollo is done. But as always, conversations need to happen on a continual basis to address those areas of safety and security, because things change. It's constantly, the world is changing, so we need to look at different ways that we can keep protecting our students and staff within the buildings.
Thank you. Al?
It's a good question. It's a tough question, because there's a lot of different priorities, and there's a lot of different things to focus on when you're on the board. If I had a couple that I would list out, one is, I mentioned in my first question, it's the Apollo referendum, or the Apollo, not the referendum, but the Apollo remodel. To see that through to its conclusion, it's one of the most exciting things that's happening in the school district. There's so many things going on in that building and so many changes coming, and it's going to change the way that we do education in our school district. It's going to bring both schools to the same level of facility so that when you look at career, especially career in tech education, the changes that are being made at Apollo are phenomenal. We're going to have programs at Apollo that we, you know, that kids can come, and they get hands-on learning. They can either go right out into a career after they graduate from high school, or they can go on to further their education in college. But things like adding the ambulance base so that we can have EMT training, and right alongside that, hospital rooms so that we can have CNA training. The amount of infrastructure that we're putting into computer technology, and that is going to be phenomenal. Coming into the age of AI is going to be just awesome for that school. The fax area, the robotics-type things, all of that stuff is just going to be just so awesome. And the second thing that I would really work on is, and I've worked on it for years, but it's our district image. I think, you know, Peter said it, but I agree. Our district does not have the strongest image of any district, of any of the districts in this area. However, if you look at what we do and how we do it, we outperform, or we are as, we perform as well as any other school district around here, any other school district in the state, as far as that goes. So, I'm...
Thank you. Gina?
Yeah, I think that there are, the first priority I'd like to probably touch on is really strengthening and improving our relationship and public perception between communities, schools, and families. There's a lot of talk about our test scores for students, and while, yes, they could be better, I think it's important that we understand the why behind those test scores. We have a lot of students that are facing food insecurity, facing housing insecurity, and we have a lot of English learners. So really understanding the why behind the so-called underperformance. It is very hard to perform well if you don't have any food in your belly and you haven't slept in a bed in a week. The other thing that I'd really like to focus on is safety, both physical safety and psychological safety. We are raising kids in a very interesting time, and as a current parent, it's hard to send your kid to school some days when they get on the bus. That's a reality that parents are facing. You want to make sure that your child comes home from school safe. You want to make sure they're free from harm. You want to make sure they're not separated from their family. And on top of that, physical safety, psychological safety, so ensuring that students are free of a bullying environment, free from harassment, free from discrimination. And that also goes for teachers and educators and staff as well. Having that same safe environment where someone can be their authentic self, and students can learn to the best of their full potential, and educators can excel at their position.
Thank you. Next question. How are state and federal budgets likely to affect programs and staffing levels in District 742 in the next few years? Al?
It's a good question. I'm not, I like to look at it from the positive standpoint and believe that there isn't going to be any major funding changes. I don't think we're going to see huge increases, but I also don't think that we're going to see huge decreases. The state did put an inflationary adjustment into the funding formula, and that's where most of our funds come from. So I would think that, for the near future anyway, and I don't think, I don't think that it wasn't forever. It expires after a few years. Eric, you could work on that. But it does take care of the next few years. So from the state, I believe that the funding is going to be pretty secure. From the federal government, I like to believe that there isn't going to be any major changes there either. There may be changes to the structure of the federal government and how the Department of Education is run, but I don't know that that is necessarily going to result in any major changes to the funding. So I think, you know, it's, we have to be aware of it, and we have to budget and staff accordingly, but I think we've done a phenomenal job of that. In 13 years I've been on the board, we've had a balanced budget every year. We always approach things really conservatively, and if we have additional money, we move on from there. This year, we saw a nice, the biggest enrollment increase that we've seen in the entire time I've been on the board. So if that continues, funding is certainly going to increase every year on a per student, not on a per student, but on a total funding basis. So I think things look fairly positive, and that's the way I approach it.
Thank you. Gina?
Yeah, I think this is a difficult question, because I feel like we don't know what's going to happen. I like to be optimistic and hopeful, but I don't know that we're headed in the right direction. I think we can hope for the best and plan for the worst. I think during this challenging time and a period of uncertainty, that we'll have to be very fiscally responsible and really plan very carefully, because a lot can change at any moment. Statewide, we might be okay. Federal, I don't know how that's going to go. So I think we just have to be very careful and thoughtful and intentional about being responsible with our budget.
Thank you. Peter?
On a federal level, we're already seeing evidence that this administration is working to reduce funding for EL learners, for English-language learners. They're working towards that process now, and it's something that will trickle down to the state level eventually, and that's one thing we need to keep an eye out for because of, obviously, our large EL population. And it worries some, too, that with the virtual destruction of the Department of Education, that funding could even get more scattered, because there may be no one to manage it, no one to watch it, no one to guide it. We may be seeing greatly reduced guidance with that funding. On the state level, again, it kind of goes back to what I said about the special education funding. It's just going to take us communicating, talking, having those conversations with folks directly involved with it, those who are influencers, those within the community whose education are affected by having it funded directly. We need to get everyone involved in the process. If you brought out the funding formula for anybody to take a look at, they would probably age a decade if you tried to read the state funding formula, and so it's not anything that's easily understood. So again, it's maybe trying to find ways of helping people understand that.
In light of the recent mass shooting at Annunciation Catholic Church, do you feel the district's safety and security policies are adequate, or should they be reviewed? And we'll start with Gina.
I think at the moment, they are adequate. Should they be reviewed? Yes. They should be reviewed often, and by not just the board, but staff, the community, students. I think that it's sad that we even have to talk about this and address this. When are we going to stop talking about children being shot in school? Like I said, I am a current parent. I'm a parent with children in this district. I know what it's like to be raising a child right now, and it's scary. And this is something that all parents think about when they look at their children's backpack get on the bus every morning. So do we need to revisit? Yes, always, all the time. We need to strengthen that. Thankfully, we haven't had anything happen here, but it's happening very close, and this is something that we should keep a close, close eye on.
Thank you. Peter?
I think it's just the improvements we've been done or will be doing to buildings, just to scare it that way, has been a great improvement. We've addressed that. There was the day, maybe a decade ago, where, oh, yeah, we can just prop that door open. It's fine. No, those days are gone. Those are done. We don't do those kind of things anymore. But do we, have we committed as a district to having ongoing conversations about it? Yes, we have. The meeting that we had at tech was at last month, really brought that out in the public and say, we just need to keep talking about these things, because there's always some different way that we might need to adjust, to change, to pivot. And so I think as long as we keep those conversations going, we are going to do whatever we can to provide a safe environment for our students and staff.
Thank you.
First question was, I think that the current is adequate, and I do, I think that it's something we've been focusing on for years, and we've made a lot of changes to the safety, both from a building standpoint, from a staff training standpoint, from the safety committee, and working with police and emergency personnel from around the area, working with all the different police departments from all the different towns. Are we, should we review it? We're constantly reviewing it. We have, there are meetings scheduled with the police departments and with the fire departments and all of the different emergency personnel around the city and the county. They're scheduled on a regular basis, and they all get together, and they talk about the protocols that are going on. We've done a lot of invisible safety improvements to the buildings also. I know this past year, we installed a system which directs an emergency responder to the exact spot within a building that a phone call is coming from, so that the response time has dropped dramatically. And it's, the camera systems have been improved in every one of our schools. There's just so many different things that we've done to improve safety within our schools, and I think we're in a pretty good spot. And it's never going to be 100%. We're never going to be able to say that this is 100%, and we don't want to create a prison-type structure where you're sending kids through metal detectors in the morning and locking them into classrooms, and, you know, you want it to be a good free flow for the students within the schools. So I think, yes, I think that we're in a pretty good spot right now.
Thank you. Next question. Are there any maintenance or construction issues pending that will require school referendums in the foreseeable future? We'll start with Peter.
I'll be honest, I don't know of any. I mean, if there's out there, I know there's always a maintenance plan the district has. I haven't honestly had a chance to look what the tenure plan is, but I know those are addressed regularly, if those are out there, but I do not foresee or know of any.
Thank you. Gina?
I echo Peter's response. I don't think I have enough knowledge on that subject to speak to what building needs to be updated. I've been in a few, but I don't, I'm not sure which ones. I think that we'd have to look at each building and see if, you know, look at our funding and the money that we have for each building, and is it worth it? Does that, if we were to fix that building, does that take money away from teachers or from resources for kids? So really evaluating that, if we do have extra funds, can we afford that, and does that impact a child's education? I think that would be the bigger question.
Thank you. Al?
I don't believe that there's any building maintenance issues that are going to be required in a referendum in the next 10 years. We have a 10-year maintenance plan that we review every year, and it gets updated, always looking out 10 years. We've done a phenomenal job of keeping our buildings in great shape. I think when I look at just the major, the major remodels that have been done in the schools over the last few years, and with the New Tech High School, the New Apollo High School, Catherine Johnson is new, Quarry View is new, we just put heating systems into the Three Sister Schools. There really isn't any major maintenance issue that's going on. The only thing that I can see that down the road could cause, or could be causing a need for a referendum would be, when I look at the age and size of Lincoln Elementary School, and when I look at the possibility of growth out on the east side of St. Cloud, there's a possibility that down the road, there may be a need for a new grade school or a new elementary school on the east side, and that would have to be done through a referendum. But as far as maintenance is concerned, no, I don't, I don't foresee anything that we haven't addressed or we don't have plans to address.
Thank you. Next question. How would you keep LGBTQ+ kids safe in school, and how would you stand up against discrimination that these students face? And we'll start with Al.
Well, all students within our schools deserve respect. They deserve to feel safe. They deserve to be treated as individuals and valued as human beings. There is no, there's no place in our schools for bullying of any students. There is no place for students to be left behind or left out. All students need to be included, and like I said, all students need to be valued, and we need to just have systems in place to identify when there are students who may be struggling, and we need to have the counselors in place to work with them, mental health professionals, and developing good student and teacher relationships and student and staff relationships throughout the building so that, so that you can anticipate some of these problems as they're going to, as, before they become a major issue within the school. So I, you know, I think that we do a really good job of that. I know we do a lot of staff training on that. So it's, every student deserves to be valued. There's no question, and that includes all students, and that includes our LGBTQ community.
Thank you. Peter?
From the top down, need to make sure the policies are in place that support that, and I think they are. Is it that concept of making sure those policies are there, and the policies are enforced? It's also making sure that we're creating an environment where all students know that they are heard, that they are valued, and that they have things, that if something's going, they are free to share that with the adults who are helping, who are there for them, and they need to make sure they feel that they can go to anyone to either report something or share something or how they feel about it, and then that will be followed up upon. It's making sure that our staff knows that if someone says it, we need to follow up on it, that we need to follow through with those, so that every level of student knows that they are, what is on them, what might be troubling them is heard and is being addressed.
Thank you. Gina?
This is a great question. I'd like to share that I am a proud ally and advocate of our LGBTQ+ community. Our students should feel safe. This kind of goes back to physical safety and psychological safety. They should feel safe to be who they are, to identify how they choose, to live their authentic life, and to be respected for the way they identify. I think that learning can only happen when a student is happy, safe, calm, and they feel like they belong. It's really important that not only do we have policies, but that those policies are enforced and that respect is carried through for both students that identify as LGBTQ+ and staff. I think that students should be able to live their authentic life, use a restroom that they choose to as how they identify. I know that we also have some gender-neutral restrooms as well here. So I think it's really important that not just enforcing policy, but really creating a welcoming environment, not where someone's just tolerated, but truly respected and feels like they belong. And again, going back to those test scores that are so popular... And again, going back to those test scores that are so popular, a student can't perform well if they don't feel like they're respected and they belong at school. So very, very important to really respect how someone lives their life. Thank you.
Thank you. The District 742 School Board has a legislative committee that works to develop and promote the district's legislative platform to state lawmakers. What funding and priorities would you advocate for if you were part of the school board? And we'll start with Al.
You know, we do the legislative platform every year. It doesn't change a whole lot from year to year. One of the top priorities is always to address the special education cross subsidy. The legislature is great at giving us mandates for special education, but they're not really good at paying for them. And when you don't pay for, so with the special education cross subsidy, it's the cost of delivering the services that the state is telling us are required in our school district. That's the cost of the staff and the cost of, just the cost of doing those services. It costs more than they reimburse us for. So that funding, the additional funding, we have no choice but to provide the service. And that's a good thing. We want to provide those services. But the cost to provide those services is more than the money that we're receiving. So we have to go into the general fund, the money that is there for all students, and we need to take that money out. Well, in our school district, it's been almost $15 million a year in excess expenses to special education over what the state has reimbursed us. And so that's a $15 million hit to the general fund. And what that results in is reductions in programming and reduction. Okay, you had me on the time there. It results in reductions in programs for all students. And it results in reductions in programs for activities and athletics and busing. It's those areas that get trimmed. And so the total education package for the community gets reduced in comparison to districts that don't have as large of a special education cross subsidy. And ours is as high as it gets in the, in the state. I think we were number one.
Thank you.
And we were the most underfunded school district in the state.
Gina.
Yeah, I would actually echo the same. I think that, you know, our special education programming is so important. And we have, if we don't have that, there's going to be so many kids that get left behind. There's going to be so many kids that can't access the resources and tools they need to succeed. And again, going into the cross subsidy, if we have to take money from another area to pay for that, we're just kind of moving money around and we don't really have enough. So I think that I would probably be an advocate of really fully funding that. And I think that we have evolved a lot as a school system where special education has changed a lot. And I think it's gotten much, much better. And kids of different abilities and different levels can be in the same classroom. And I think that's really important. And we really, really need this funding to be able to have those students really succeed and set them up with the tools they need to be a successful adult.
Thank you. Peter.
In 2014, I was chair of the Legislative Committee with this board and testified before the Minnesota Education Finance Committee, along with then Superintendent Jett regarding something called the donut hole funding. It was basically for schools up to 7,000 students enrollment. Rural schools were getting, or smaller schools were getting this funding, larger schools were getting it, but we were kind of caught in the middle. And so went down, testified along with Mr. Jett. And we started coordinating an effort with AMSD, our group in the Twin Cities. But that was legislators from outstate, from metro. And lo and behold, a couple of weeks after testimony, find out, yes, this passed. And so it resulted maybe $250, $300 per student more. But it's those kind of efforts that you find it where you can get it. Go have those conversations, do the testimony, and we can get the funding for it. So we may not be able to change the financing system as a whole, but if we can keep working away at pieces of it and getting those messages out, that's the kind of thing I am more than happy to do. I'll put the suit on. I'm not a suit guy, but I will go to the legislature. I will meet with them individually. I will testify in front of things to do whatever I can to help keep this district fully funded.
Thank you. Just a note to the audience, we're running out of questions. So we'll end the forum whenever we're running out. So if you have issues that you'd like answered to, please write out more questions. And the cards are available. One of our members will pass them out. Next question. How do you feel about teachers having guns in school? How do you think this affects school safety? And we'll start with Peter.
Easy answer, no, no, and no. It's not, we have school resource officers. Those are the people who should be carrying the guns. Those are the ones who coordinate those efforts. We don't need to be arming teachers.
Thank you. Gina.
I don't think the answer to gun violence is more guns. So I would say no.
Thank you. Al.
Not one I've given a lot of thought to. The school resource officers are, of course, the first line of defense when it comes to guns. If, if it were to occur, there would have to be an awful lot of training and certification involved, and those guns would have to be very, very secure, never left alone, never left in a, in a place or way where any student or anyone could access those other than the person who was certified to access them. So I'm not going to say that I wouldn't be open to it. I'd have to listen to what the experts were going to tell me on that. But it's not one that I've given a lot of thought. I don't think it's something that we necessarily need to pursue at this point in time.
Thank you. Can you share your stand on the issue of transgender athletes and how this issue affects District 742? And we'll start with Gina.
I think that trans athletes should be able to play in the sport that they identify with. I know that this is controversial. And I know that a lot of us may not always see eye to eye. But I do think that this, that barring a student from playing a sport that they care about would have more negative implications, more negative implications for their mental health and for the public in general. So I think that students should be able to play in the sport that they identify with.
Thank you. Peter.
We need to make sure we have inclusive schools, that we're not forcing people to out of things just because of who they are. Let's go to the bigger story. The bigger story now is the federal government pinpointing anything that's transgender and calling it evil. That's what they want to do. And so now that you have, get this, we're going to go after Title IX in states that we think we want to pick on. That's what the federal government's doing. It's a threat. It's a threat with no basis behind it. They're making threats, saying, we're going to take away your funding. Have they ever said how much funding they're going to take away? No. Have they ever set a timeline to it? No, they haven't. But it's just the federal government's mega's way of threatening of trying to attack transgender students. So if it ever actually did get to the courts, it's going to be so tied up that it'll go on forever. There may not even be a Department of Education left to fight that battle on the federal level. I challenge people to say, how has it really affected you? Give me an instance where it's really affected you or someone you know. And you're going to go, well, I heard. Stop it there. Has it really affected you or the classrooms in this school? No. But it's a great story to get wound up about and to attack transgender kids.
Thank you. Al.
Yep, so it's no secret. I personally signed a letter to our state legislatures, legislature, or legislative leaders urging Minnesota to follow federal guidelines surrounding Title IX. I asked our leaders not to gamble $17 million of our school district's funding to fight this issue at the state level. This needs to be settled in Congress or in federal court where Title IX actually comes from. Title IX was written to give boys and girls equal access to programs and facilities, separate but equal opportunities for each sex. In 2021, the Biden administration issued an executive order expanding the definition of sex to include gender identity. Earlier this year, the Trump administration rescinded that order and replaced it with a new one clarifying that biological men are not to compete in women's sports. During the DFL trifecta, Minnesota changed its definition of sex to match the Biden order. Now that order is gone, but our state law hasn't been updated. That puts our state law in direct conflict with federal law and me as a school board member in conflict with my oath of office and duty to follow the law. The supremacy clause of the U.S. Constitution makes it clear, when state and federal laws conflict, federal law prevails. For Minnesota to be in compliance, it must implement changes or the issue must be resolved at the national level by Congress or the Supreme Court. Fighting this at the state level could cost us up $17 million in federal funding just in 742, the equivalent of 170 full-time teachers. That would be harmful to every student in our schools. There's currently no board proposal, no agenda item, and no policy change proposed for making any changes at the school district level. We don't make law, we follow law at the school, on a school board.
Thank you.
So, okay.
Next question. What is your plan for increasing math and reading scores in District 742? We'll start with Peter.
Board members set policies. They said, we entrusted those who the district has put in place to put those methods in place, we'll do those. It's us to review. I'm not going to come in and say, we need to do X, Y, and Z in this fifth grade. You said, that's not my job. My job is to review what those people who are implementing those programs are doing to make sure they're up to date. You know, my job, I can go out and look at what other districts are doing. I make suggestions, but I'm not there to say, to dictate what is taught in the classroom.
Thank you. Al.
Peter's 100% right. There's governance, which is a school board member. We oversee the process, but we don't implement the process. The implementers is the staff and the administration. The, I would say, as far as reading is concerned, okay, with math, we implemented a new math program about two or three years ago. And with reading, going, moving into the science of reading and going more to a phonics-based reading, I have great, I have, I really think there's great promise in that. Reading scores really started to dip when we moved away from the phonics-based system. And now going back to it with the science of reading, I think that's going to show some remarkable improvements in the reading scores in the coming years. But it is, it's, it's the, it's the administration's job to come to the board with their recommendations for how we're going to do that. And I think that we, they have done that. I mean, like I said, we've implemented different, different curriculum in both reading and math over, in the last few years. And I, I believe it's going to pay off.
Thank you. Gina.
Well, understanding that the board doesn't, we don't have that responsibility of raising those test scores, I think this still kind of goes back to, when I shared the beginning, is the public perception. And although we aren't, the board isn't the one that's trying to raise the test scores, I still think it's important that we have to understand the why behind those test scores. There's so many barriers to so many kids these days. And it's really important that we figure out the root cause of those test scores. So again, you know, children that might be hungry, children that might be facing, being unhoused, there's our children facing mental health challenges. Really understanding and working together with parents in the community of why these test scores are not where they should be, or where we'd like them to be, or where parents would like them to be. So really understanding the root cause of that.
Thank you. How would you approach long-term financial planning to ensure sustainability while supporting the district's educational priorities? Gina, you're first.
I think this kind of touches on what I said earlier, that, you know, so many things are changing so fast that we need to be fiscally responsible in planning long-term. Again, hope for the best, plan for the worst. But I also would be want to careful, be careful about making plans that are too far ahead. So even if we did make a long-term plan, making sure that that's reevaluated on a regular basis and on a shorter-term basis. So again, really planning for the future, but making sure that we're evaluating our processes that we've put in place along the way.
Thank you. Peter.
One area that we can control are facilities and what I like to call hard goods, those things like tables, chairs, all that. That's something that the legislator isn't, legislator can't control. So I think the district already has a good 10-year plan in place. It gets reviewed constantly. So what we can control is expenses, to make sure that those 10-year, five-year, two-year plans are solid, that we're looking to address the right things, that we won't have those surprise expenses come up. And the rest of it, again, just goes back to trying to work on, you know, communicating our needs to those who control the purse strings.
Thank you. Al.
Yeah, long-term financial planning is kind of difficult to do because the legislature meets every two years and comes up with a budget for two years and doesn't give us any clue as to what they're going to do in the coming biennium. But every year before we, well, every two years, we get a budget and we know what it's going to be relatively close for the next two years. And we plan very conservatively. We plan for very little enrollment growth. In fact, usually we've planned flat on enrollment or even a small loss. We plan to staff for those numbers and then we have to make adjustments as soon as the school year starts. Year to year, there's not generally major swings. Like you don't see 10 or 20% increases or decreases in revenue. You see 1 or 2%. So you can kind of go by that guideline and plan conservatively based on that.
Thank you. How do you see AI being used in the schools? We'll start with Al.
There's people that know a lot more about AI than me. But I'll tell you what, we've, this district and this superintendent, Dr. Potnum, have been very forward-thinking in this, and we are one of the leading school districts in the state and the nation as far as that goes on how to incorporate AI. And there's so many different ways that you have to look at it. It's how are the teachers going to use it in the classroom? How are students going to use it in the classroom? What, what things do we need to do to protect students and their data with AI? And when different AI programs are, are put in place in the school district, who owns that data? And how are, what do they get to do with it? And how do they control it? And all of those systems need to be put in place. And those are all things that to Laurie's credit, I'm going to say, they're, they're being dealt with right now. And we have put together a very awesome group of people who know AI and deal with AI as a, on a daily basis. And they're, they're advising us. And I think that we're, like I said, I believe that we're one of the leaders in the state. And people are coming to us asking what we're doing.
Thank you. Gina.
Yeah, I think that AI is here to stay and we have to learn how to evolve with it. AI can be a great tool if used responsibly and ethically. So I think that, you know, just having a team kind of reviewing that every so often, I do think that AI can be very helpful and very useful in the classroom. And then at the same time, just, you know, understanding, making sure that there's no privacy breaches, making sure that it's being used responsibly, that it's, that children are still thinking for themselves and not using it necessarily to do their homework, but as a tool. But I see it as a tool that we can evolve with, and it can be helpful when used responsibly.
Thank you. Thank you. Peter.
I need to go off what Al said, the things that I've read and seen, what this district is already doing with the guiding principles behind AI. I'm here at that knowledge level, they're bringing in people who are, I can't reach up that high. But it's, so I think we are way out of it, we're becoming a leader in it. People are coming to us, Al said about that, and they're the ones who are going to be able to give a good answer as to how this all works out. I'm just a 60-year-old guy who goes to Google and sees an AI answer and doesn't really get it, but I'll trust that someone, and I know we're doing a much better job than I would be with it.
Thank you. Challenges facing students have continued to increase, causing anxiety and other mental health challenges. Do you think the district is providing adequate mental health support? Peter.
It's, what I spent a few years doing site management at Apollo then was the interim activities director. So I was boots-on-the-ground within the school, and I got to tell you, it's a different environment than I was in high school in the mid-'80s. It's a different place. Social media, these things, it drives a kid nuts whether they want to tell you or not, and so there's so many different pressures that come with that. But I talked to staff within the buildings, things I saw directly, and it's things that may not happen openly or that you see, but it's amazing how staff respond and reply to some, a lot of, most of these kids, at least I hope they're getting it, they recognize who the ones are who need to be reached out, who they respond, they're reached out to. I think we're doing the best with the resources we have, or I can tell. I think we're doing, we've got so many people in these buildings that understand what to look for, what to respond to, and I think we're doing it. Is always going to be perfect? No. Do we need to keep talking about it? Of course.
Thank you. Al.
Peter said it, we're doing the best we can with the resources that we have. Do I think that it's adequate? No. I think that we could use a lot more, and I mean a lot more, mental health supports within the schools. There's, with the demographics that we have in our school district, with the level of poverty that we have in our school district, with the level of trauma that students suffer within our school district, we could use a lot more mental health supports within our schools. And Gina's touched on it a few times, it's 100% right. If students don't, if students don't feel safe, if they don't, if they're not fed, if they're not housed, they're not going to learn, and that affects our test scores. And with the, again, with the level of poverty that we see in St. Cloud, it's, the low incomes, the lack of housing, 10% of our students, 10% of our students are involved in the homeless, are seen in the homeless program every year, 10%. That's a huge number, and think of what that does to the test scores. Those kids, they need a lot of support, and man, we could use a lot more mental health funding. It would just be a wonderful thing, be a wonderful thing for the community.
Thank you. Gina.
I think we're in a mental health crisis. I think the district is doing the best that they can with the resources, again, comes down to funding. This is a widespread issue, even in healthcare, six, nine months to see a mental health provider sometimes. I think this is, this is an emergency. So does it need to be improved? Yes, especially since we were talking about before, when we have all this violence in our schools, we need more mental health supports. So I think the district is doing what they can with what they have, but we have to figure out a better solution to get these supports to our students.
Thank you. Our ELL student count is continuing to increase year after year, yet our schools remain under-resourced. How would you best address this imbalance as a school board member? Al.
We've seen a large increase in EL students. I'm not sure that it's continuing to increase at the same rate. How would I address it? We do have an EL cross-subsidy, it's very similar to the special education cross-subsidy. And really, the only way that we can address it is to continually focus on that. It is part of our legislative platform every year to approach our legislators and see what they can do to provide additional funding. And we, that's, we, it's always, so many things come down to funding issues, and there's a limited amount of resources, and we have to put them to the best use that we can possibly put them to. We have an excellent EL program within our school district. We were one of the first ones to have this, have a large number of Somali students. So again, there were not a lot of materials available at the time that the Somali population in this area grew, so we had a very integral part in developing those curriculum. But as far as how can, how can we address it? It would be working with our legislature and seeing if we can get additional funding to help.
Thank you. Gina.
This is such an important resource. Again, working with, we need more funding for this. This is, this is not something that's going to decrease over time, I don't think. I think that Minnesota is attracting more and more students from different backgrounds, and we may be having, we're going to have more and more languages in this state. So really advocating for more funding for this. We're not going to be able to raise those test scores that everyone is so concerned about if this is not fully funded. Again, going back to, students need to have these resources to be able to succeed. So if, we're going to have to advocate on students' behalf to help them get to where they need.
Thank you. Peter.
I think without seeing facts or evidence behind, it's kind of tough just to form a general answer to that question. So it's something where I think we need to make sure we're identifying where those gaps are, whether it be in our processes or in our staffing, and then try to address them the best way possible, whether it's trying to get increased funding or to change the way we do things. But without kind of seeing the real background around it, it's tough to put a solid answer to that. But I think, again, it's trusting of those who are in charge of those programs are doing everything possible to run them as correctly as possible.
Thank you. How much responsibility do you feel the educational system should have in homeless children and Gina.
How much responsibility? That's hard to put a number on it. I think it's important that the education system addresses it and helps find, helps the student and the family to find these resources. I would really like to see, you know, more of a committee formed, or maybe like a resource packet, something that can really help address not just the students, but really the parents as well. So maybe a program to kind of help parents that might be in between housing. So I understand that it's not the education department's entire job, but it does affect a student's education, so I do see it as part of their overall learning experience. So as far as how much responsibility, I can't really say how much, but I do believe that we do have a responsibility to help those students facing homelessness.
Thank you. Peter.
Well, I think it's something the district can't do alone. I think it's something that has to be a community-based effort. We don't want to be duplicating efforts, but we want to make sure that the whole puzzle's being looked at, and there's, if there's nonprofits who are doing some things, where they fall short, where can the district fill in those gaps? What is the city doing? What is the state doing? So instead of everyone, you know, different groups running around trying to solve it, let's get together, figure out the right ways to do it, use our resources the best way possible, and then we can address that. But the district needs to be involved because, you know, there is, there's a promise that we're going to educate all of our kids, whether they come with pockets full of money or no money at all. We need to make sure we're going to get the education to them.
Thank you. Al.
Yeah, from, from a safety net standpoint, I think that those programs should stay with the state and the county. The school district, I think, should be involved from a referral standpoint. We are working with students on a day-to-day basis, and we can recognize problems or issues that may need to be, or students that may need supports or help. But I think the actual dissemination of the services should stay with the state and the county, with the exception maybe of the school lunch program, which I believe that every student should get a meal every day in schools. I've always felt that way. It's a, I'm very happy to say that we can do that right now, and students are getting fed. And again, if you're not getting fed, or if you're hungry at school, you're not going to be learning. So that's one program that I'm very, very happy that we do have. We have the facilities to do it, and we get federal funding to do it. So that's, that's great, we'll keep that. But as far as other homeless services, I think that that safety net should stay with the county and the state, and we should just be more involved from a referral standpoint.
Thank you. How did or does your professional career prepare you for being on the school board? Peter.
Well, I was three years into a teaching degree, woke up one morning, decided I didn't want to be a teacher, so that's probably not the best answer. But what it was, I didn't have the heart to do it. I woke up and went, you know what? I don't think I can go into a classroom and do it. And so, but I always then still had that inclination. I was, so that's why I was involved with, for how many years, levies and referendums, get the new Kennedy bill, I was in the process of getting that done. I was president of the PTA. There's not a lot of guys in this world who can say they're president, they're PTA. I did it, it was fun. And that's what led me to run for the board then. And so a lot of experience just in those four years on the board. After that, worked a number of years at Apollo doing site management, doing PA announcing, just being around the kids, being around students. Spent my one year's interim AD, learned a lot there, learned a lot. There's people who know how to do things better than I do with a lot of things. But it's kind of that, that ability, I've really learned to listen. And in sales now, yeah, I can say I listen a lot, I'm just trying to, you know, make a sale. But it's really being able to sit back, listen to what people are saying, watch what they're saying, what they're doing, and interpret that and think it through, not to come in with a perceived concept that I have, this is the way it's going to be. I take a very broad approach, saying, let's listen to everything, let's step back, let's read about it, let's research some more about it, and then come to decisions. And that's where I think I come from.
Thank you. Gina.
I think that my professional life has prepared me in, has set me up for this position, honestly. So I work in equity in healthcare, and I think I mentioned briefly earlier that work on initiatives to support underserved or marginalized communities. This includes employees and patients as well. Some of the initiatives I've worked on at work are gender-neutral, single-stall restrooms. So I've been part of that project. I've been part of building or designated meditation rooms, so someone has the freedom to practice their religion or lack of religion, you can just go in there and meditate. So I feel that this would actually be a great setting for me, especially given our student population, how many barriers they're facing. I could really relate this to my work in the patient setting and employee setting of those that are facing barriers. A lot of my work revolves around belonging. So really, my day job would really weave right into this, and I think I have a lot of experience in this area.
Thank you. Al.
Yeah, I'll tell you what, being self-employed, you learn a lot of stuff. I think that it's one of the area, it's one of the things in, about me that brings a lot to the board. I have a, I am experienced in so many different things, from, from being a small business owner with 26 employees. I'm dealing with all of the legal issues and all of the paperwork and accounting and all of that stuff every single day for all of those employees. I'm dealing with taxes and all of the different mandates that the government brings down to us. I'm dealing with HVAC systems and keeping those up and running. I'm dealing with remodeling and, and planning spaces. I'm dealing with landlords, I'm dealing with, there's, it's just, I mean, it's a nonstop thing, but talk about a background that, that rounds you for the, the knowledge to run an organization, or to at least have the knowledge base of what it takes to run an organization. Mine is nowhere near as large as the school district, but it's, it's not tiny either, and it, it's a challenge, it's a daily grind, but I really believe I know and learn a lot of things from that job.
Thank you. How do adverse childhood experiences affect our classrooms and students? What can the school board do about this? Al.
Adverse childhood, say that again, adverse childhood.
Experiences.
Experiences. In other words, trauma, how does that, how does that play out in the classroom? It affects students, it affects their behavior, it affects how they react to situations. I'm a, I'm a firm believer in Maslow's hierarchy of needs, and that the very basic needs, food, water, air, those types of things, you cannot learn if you don't, if you haven't satisfied the need for those, and it moves up from there, and it moves, the next one would be safety, next is a sense of belonging, then you start to move up into the very, until, until you've achieved those, you virtually cannot learn. Once you've got those, then you can move up into the top of the pyramid, in which, in which you feel comfortable, you're happy, you feel safe when you come to school, your brain is ready to take on the challenge of learning. And the higher in that pyramid, and the more comfortable that you, and more, the more love and sense of belonging that you have, the more you're going to be open to learning. And the more you're open to learning, the more you're going to learn, and the more successful you're going to be. So I think that adverse, adverse childhood experiences are very, they have a very negative effect on learning, and we need, that's where we can go back to the counselor question, but, or the mental health support question, and that's, that's why we need it so badly. A community like ours has a lot of kids who experience a lot of trauma.
Thank you. Peter.
I think every student has a story, and that story may not be things that we always see. It could be that kid, you think, oh, he's a great athlete, great student, he's got the best of all worlds, but there could be something going on in his life or her life that we just don't know about, that is always in the back of their heads. And so the job of the board is really make sure that our schools are creating that inclusive environment where kids can feel to go safe, that they're seen, that they're heard, that they're not just a number in a classroom, that at some point, at some day, there's going to be an adult who acknowledges them, who sees them, whether it be the person in the lunch line, or the monitor in the hallway, or the classroom teacher, that those kids are going to feel at some point they've got a given point in every day where they're seen and that they're understood.
Thank you. Gina.
I think it's important to understand that if a child experiences trauma, let's say they have one traumatic experience, it's not just once. They carry that through, they carry that through them with them every day, and they carry that with them to school. Going back to how does this affect learning? Greatly, greatly impacts it. And then this brings us back again to mental health. We need more mental health support, and whether that's in the school or in the community, it's something that we all need to talk about and have healthy dialogue, and also reduce the stigma around mental health. We have a lot of sadness in our world right now, we have a lot of violence in our world right now, we have a lot of disagreements in our world right now. And if we can really hone in on really working with our students with our mental health, then that's when we can start, again, going back to the education, you're not going to be able to effectively learn if you're still carrying that trauma with you. And you may always carry that trauma with you, but you can have tools to be able to cope with your trauma and live a normal life.
Thank you. What is your view of DE What is your view of DEI with respect to teaching and the curriculum?
Hadn't thought about it much, to be honest. Again, the curriculum is, again, not something I'm going to dictate. As a board member, I'm going to review. It's troubling this whole move at a level of not wanting to be inclusive, of not wanting to be equal with people, of starting to belittle different groups. And we're, we're all in this together. It's what's the old Paul Bellstone, we all do better when we all do better, or something of that vein. There's, it's inconceivable that we would try to cut down any portion of our society to make us feel better or whoever does it. So I think we need to be as inclusive of everyone as we can. We need to understand everyone's viewpoints, and we need to be able to talk about it openly and freely. Now, you could get in whole hours-long conversations about, okay, where does that come as far as curriculum? It's probably not going to be answered tonight. That's probably what curriculum committees are for, to better address.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's kind of a, I don't know that I fully understand that question. DEI has certainly become a bad word in the course of the last five, 10 years. I believe that every student deserves respect. Every student deserves to be loved. Every student deserves to be honored. And if we can develop an environment that supports that, then we're doing our jobs. If we can develop curriculum that supports that, then we are doing our jobs. I, like I said, I don't really understand the question the way that it was written there, but.
Thank you.
I think the more books that kids have access to, the better. Age-appropriate books, of course. But I really think that books that challenge students to really think critically is important. I think learning about the honest truth about history is important. I think students learning about diverse experiences is important. You may have someone that, you know, we only know what we see and experience in our lives. So really gaining information from books is really, is really profound. I don't think that we should push a, try to sway people with certain books. I believe in academic freedom and the right to, for teachers, to choose the books that they want for their students. Obviously, age-appropriate materials, but I definitely believe in academic freedom and the choice to read the books that you choose.
Thank you. We've reached the end of our time for questions, and we'll begin with closing statements. You will each have one minute to summarize why you believe your qualifications are well-matched for the office of St. Cloud Area School Board Member. And we will start with Gina.
Last name starts with A. So first of all, thank you everyone for being here tonight. Great crowd. I'll just close with that, you know, I live here, I work here, I'm raising my family here. I think that I have both the skills and experience and the heart for this work. Knowing that decisions that I make will affect my children and knowing that I have my best, if I have my children's best interests in heart, I have your children's best interests in heart. So I feel a deep purpose to serve this community, and I thank you all for being here tonight.
Thank you. Al.
Yeah, I appreciate everyone coming out too. I guess the skills that I have, both through my business and through my experience on the school board, I feel are very valuable. I think I've been very influential on the school board in things that have happened over the course of the last 12, 13 years. I think the first five years you're on a board, you're learning. And after that, you can really become an effective board member. And I believe I'm, I believe I'm there. I believe I'm effective. I believe that I have a lot to offer for this board. I will say that if I do win this election, I probably won't run again because I'm going to be at an age where I'm going to be ready to find some other fun things to do in life.
Thank you. Peter.
I'm going to feel a little like Bruce Moe is doing this, but I think it's worthwhile. We cannot always build the future for our youth, but we can build our youth for the future. Words of FDR still stand strong today. We, as adults, have the responsibility to provide our children with the best educational opportunities possible. I believe I still have that energy, that knowledge, that drive to go do it. And I think the best days of this district are ahead of us, and I want to be part of that. I would also encourage you to visit hammerlink742.com because I'm not printing out materials. I'm going to direct you to the website. It's a way you can communicate with me if you want to or just find out more about what I'm about. And again, I appreciate the League for putting this on.
Thank you. Thank you, audience members, for submitting your questions. We got through 17 questions tonight. Thank you to each. Thank you to each of the candidates for running for public office and for participating in this forum. Thank you to the district administration staff for the use of this room. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of the sponsor.